...
It's so quiet. It's so quiet. Okay. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I will call into open session At this time, I will call into open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on February 7, 2019, beginning at 7:10 p.m. on February 7, 2019, beginning at 7:10 p.m. Thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening. Thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening. As is our custom, we will start the meeting with our opening ceremony. As is our custom, we will start the meeting with our opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Hibbs in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join Mr. Hibbs in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Please be seated. Please be seated. And if you would also please silence any cell phones and electronic devices And if you would also please silence any cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would also join me in a moment of silence And now, if you would also join me in a moment of silence and please think about some continued loss and please think about some continued loss that we've felt in our district that we've felt in our district over the past few weeks. over the past few weeks. Thank you. Thank you. All right. All right. So the first item under program and presentation on our agenda this evening So the first item under program and presentation on our agenda this evening is our student performance, if you couldn't guess it, is our student performance, if you couldn't guess it, by our district-wide junior high orchestra. by our district-wide junior high orchestra. And Ms. Foster, would you like to introduce them? And Ms. Foster, would you like to introduce them?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Dr. Reich, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, Dr. Reich, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, folks that are assembled here tonight, you are in for a massive treat folks that are assembled here tonight, you are in for a massive treat because we have the district-wide orchestra that's going to play tonight. because we have the district-wide orchestra that's going to play tonight. These kids come from all of the junior high schools across Arlington These kids come from all of the junior high schools across Arlington and make up this amazing group of talented musicians. and make up this amazing group of talented musicians. They recently competed, and they were selected to perform They recently competed, and they were selected to perform with the TMEA Region 5 All-Star Orchestra. with the TMEA Region 5 All-Star Orchestra. The audition process started back in November The audition process started back in November when there were more than 400 students that auditioned when there were more than 400 students that auditioned in a blind adjudication process, and only the best musicians in a blind adjudication process, and only the best musicians from Arlington, Fort Worth, and Mansfield were selected. from Arlington, Fort Worth, and Mansfield were selected. So, of course, our students are there. So, of course, our students are there. So after being selected, they met for an entire weekend in late January. So after being selected, they met for an entire weekend in late January. They were taught, which was really exciting, They were taught, which was really exciting, by a nationally-recognized guest clinician, by a nationally-recognized guest clinician, and they performed their concert only 24 hours later. and they performed their concert only 24 hours later. They performed through a rousing standing ovation They performed through a rousing standing ovation in front of about 900 people. in front of about 900 people. And tonight, they're going to be playing that song. And tonight, they're going to be playing that song. It's "Ellis Island" by Silva. It's "Ellis Island" by Silva. They're conducted by Lacy McCoy, the director of orchestras at Owlesley Junior High. They're conducted by Lacey McCoy, the director of orchestras at Owlesley Junior High. So please help me welcome these young but extremely talented district-wide musicians. So please help me welcome these young but extremely talented district-wide musicians.
...
...
That was fantastic. Ms. McCoy, thank you for your conducting. Students can see why you received a standing ovation after just 24 hours of presentation in front of 900 people or preparation. That's just incredible. You guys are great. Thank you so much for coming here tonight and sharing such beautiful harmony with us. Can I see a show of hands? I know there's other junior high orchestra teachers here. Are there any? Okay, there you go. Thank you, guys. Thank you all. And to all the parents and family and support systems to make all this happen, thank you very much. Wonderful. Great job. Great job. That was wonderful. If we didn't have business to discuss, we would just listen to this all night. Just pardon us for a couple of minutes here. It's incredible. Junior high. Amazing. Wonderful. So much time and preparation goes into their performances. It's incredible. My hat's off to everybody involved there. So we are going to continue on. The next item on our agenda is the Student of the Month. This month, we're recognizing Newcomer Center for February, and we have Principal Greg Meeks here. Mr. Meeks, if you wouldn't mind coming forward and telling us all about your student.
President Reich, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, I'm honored to be here tonight. It's my first presentation for a newcomer student. I get to do it twice this year, so I get to present venture and newcomer. At Newcomer, our student enrollment is growing, and we're proud of what we're doing there. And a couple of our staff members, Ms. Polanco, our assistant principal, Ms. Rolanda Woodson is here, as well as Mr. Anderson, who's had Mateo for two years in a row. So they're all here to support Mateo. I asked the teachers to share students that would be honored for this award and would reflect it, and four or more teachers immediately said Mateo. Hard work, diligence. I'll tell you a little bit about Mateo. He's a 10th-grade student. It's his second year at Newcomer. Mateo is from Ecuador. Mateo has been a shining example of determination and excellence through what he's done in our school, through his acquisition of language, his credits, and his EOC mastery. We all know that's challenged anywhere. I'll tell you, Mateo has 15 credits. He'll have 19 credits in June as a... He's supposed to be a junior, but he'll be a senior. He's on pace. As he goes into his next year, he's passed his Algebra EOC. He's passed his ELA EOC, and that was his first year in our country, which is amazing. He has a kind heart. He has a drive for success, and so it's not about being. It's about Mateo Landivar. So Mateo, please, Jude Wood, please step up.
Good evening, Mateo. How are you?
I'm good.
Good. Good. Please, you have the microphone, so share with us your thoughts and introduce anybody that might be here with you.
Thanks. First, thanks for inviting me, Dr. Cavassos, President Rich, and the members of the board. I'm a little nervous.
Don't be.
First, as you hear, I'm from Ecuador, South America. It's a very honor for... Born there. Well, I will start. When I first come to Newcomer Center, my English was very low. Always new, new life, new culture, new things to learn. Always today, English was like my problem. But my family, my mom, my father, my sister, wanted a better life for me, so we come here, the United States. Here in the United States, I feel like my home right now. The experience I have with my family and with the school is like so amazing that a country like the United States is me something like that. But now, right now, I improve a lot in my English. I don't know what's going on in the future, but... After graduate from high school, I went to be architect. When I was young, I played a lot with the Legos. That's so funny. I did a lot of things with that. So with that, I think I can do it because with Legos, why not with a building with 16 feet? I want to be architect too because I want to give to my country something that they need. After graduate high school, I don't know if I'm going to come back to my country to help them or stay here. But like I say, I don't know what's going on in the future. And that could... In the future, can happen a lot of things. So thank you for listening to me. Thanks for inviting me. I appreciate it a lot.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere just yet, Mateo. If... I just wanted to say here on the microphone, thank you for those words. It's an honor for us to have you here. Your level of English, to me, is very impressive. I don't think I would be able to be as far in advance if I was in the same situation. So you're obviously very intelligent, and this is a, as you say, brand-new everything. Brand-new culture, brand-new life here. Thank you to the family, mom and dad, for providing the opportunities as well. You say you don't know what the future may bring, but I will tell you, every day is the future, and you're making great steps forward in progress. And I think it's a wonderful thought to build those Legos as tall as you can and be a great architect. I would like to come down with Dr. Cavassos and present you something, so if you would stay right there.
Thanks.
Come on over here, Mateo. As you can see, we, as trustees, wear these pins. These are our pins. If you can turn around a little. No, you're good. And we do hold these very, very special and dear and only present these to people that exemplify a great positive energy and what we are trying to do with, as a board, in our district. And we'd like to give you one. And hold on to that, think about us, and know that we support you, and we're behind you every step of the way. about us and know that we support you and we're behind you every step of the way. And feel free to wear it or display it or keep it in the door, but anytime you look at it, think of us. We are here for you, and we're so proud of you. You are a great example of energy and perseverance and great things for our other students that are in the district here. So, thank you very much. And Dr. Cavassos has something.
Mateo, thank you for being an outstanding student and a great representative of our students in Arlington. You're a special student. We care a lot about you and we want you to succeed. And we know that with the strong families, strong teachers, principals, et cetera, you're going to be successful. You already are. So congratulations.
I don't know about the rest of you, but if that's not inspirational, I don't know what is. It's fantastic. Wonderful opportunities here. Very good. Thank you. Fantastic. All right, moving on, our next agenda item, C. Community Engaged for Excellence Award of Appreciation, and this is going to New Day. And Mr. Peralis, our Director of Parent Community Engagement, if you would mind, wouldn't mind, please telling us a little bit more about New Day.
All right. Dr. Reich, President Dr. Reich, Dr. Cavassos, members of the school board, thank you so much for allowing me to be a part of this presentation today. I often tell folks that I'm working with in the community, one of the first things I learned when I took over this position, this new opportunity, was the overwhelming feeling that I received from the community in just knowing all of the initiatives that were already in place to support our students. And five and a half years ago, looking back and looking where we are now, just the continuous engagement of our community, not just with things that existed before, but the new initiatives, the new ideas, and the new energy that they bring. It truly is a blessing to be a part of the Arlington community as a staff member here at AISD and as a parent. This evening, I want to share a little bit about a very special organization, one of those organizations that works with our students. I'm going to ask Reverend Betsy Pence to come stand next to me. And at this time, I'm going to ask her colleagues to stand where they are. And this is Reverend Betsy Pence. And I learned very quickly that it's always good to have a reverend standing next to you when you speak. So I want to share some things about New Day with you. This is Reverend Betsy Pence, and she is the president of the New Day. And so, established in 2005, New Day is a local nonprofit organization that provides student outreach ministry by delivering weakened bags of food to campuses for students. New Day has volunteers throughout the city that supports the effort. The three locations where bags of food are prepared are Grace Presbyterian Church, Trinity United Methodist Church, and Westminster Presbyterian Church. Now, I can tell you, I've seen the operation at Westminster, and it is impressive. And since she's next to me, I need to share with you that I've probably taken a little bit of your tricks back to the PACE department and how you pack things. So it's pretty impressive. New Day works directly with campus counselors to identify students that exhibit issues with hunger or may be food insecure. This school year, New Day has provided 14,153 bags of food to students at 42 Arlington ISD campuses. In addition, New Day has provided over 8,700 individual food items to high schools that have food pantry initiatives. This school year alone, New Day has provided an estimated $65,000 worth of food items to AISD students. With their commitment, yes. With their commitment to support our most at-risk students, New Day is truly deserving of the AISD Community Engaged for Excellence Award of Appreciation. Reverend Betsy Pence.
Board members, Dr. Cavassos, thank you for welcoming us and for this honor. A few people, eight or 10, helped New Day begin. One volunteer took 10 bags of food one March Day in 2005 to Venture School. John DeMore, who's a retired AISD principal, was the principal at Venture when we started. That was then. Now, over 100 volunteers buy food, prepare sacks of food, and deliver food to the schools. At the end of January, I guess that's two weeks ago, 976 bags a week, plus the loose products that Erin mentioned that go to schools that have kind of grocery closet programs for high schools. You all know, the problem of food insufficiency and children who live in unstable food situations is prevalent everywhere, and the need is indeed real. So we are grateful, New Day is grateful, to be able to provide services to these kids in partnership with the schools. And so, we thank you for recognizing our work and for this honor.
Well, thank you. First off, thank you. It is our honor to be able to recognize you. It is, it's unimaginable. There is so much need in our community, and as you've stated, the empty bellies lead to not a good experience in anything, especially in school. And thank you for doing your part, an amazing, incredible part, in filling those voids, literal and figurative. I know you had them all sit down, but I'd love to hear just an introduction on who these wonderful people are.
Y'all say that. Kelly, Georgia, Jimmy Hart, John DeMore, Early Tye, Martha Kiner, and Brian Anderson.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I believe, do we, okay, yeah, I have something for you. Dr. Cavassos and I will come on down. All right. So, so that it's picked up on the worldwide web out there. This is the Community Engaged for Excellence Award of Appreciation presented to New Day for your service to the Arlington ISD dated this February 7, 2019.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate it. That's for you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate what you do for our students.
We are glad to be in partnership with you.
Thank you.
It's absolutely phenomenal. Thank you, each and every one of you. And started out with 10, and you're up to 100. I just see it continuing to grow, would be my guess. Thank you so much, because sadly, the need is also growing.
Sadly, the need is growing.
Yeah. If you wouldn't mind, please come here in the middle. And yes, the rest of you, we'd love to have the whole group. And you can use this as a recruitment tool and say, look. If you want. Here, I'll get out of the way. There we go. Yeah, how about you? So very much. Really appreciate it. Thanks, John. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you for coming down. Thanks for coming down here this evening. Wow. That's pretty phenomenal. 14,000 bags. And then some. That is unbelievable. We are blessed in our district. We are blessed by our community. It's absolutely wonderful. All right, we don't have any appointments, which is so very rare. I don't know what to do. We don't have any appointments. I was gonna say, Mr. Cal's not here. He just has to say, "See you." All right. The next item, there's public hearing. We don't have any. Open forum for agenda items. All I see are non-agenda item cards. Is that correct, Ms. Benjamin? That's all I have here. Okay. All right. So we will move on forward then to the first action item, which is consider the extending the terms of members of the Financial Futures Committee, appointing new members and alternates to the committee, and appointing the Financial Futures Committee Chairperson. Mr. Hibbs. Yeah, I'm getting there. I've got to get the screen up. There's nothing listed. Yeah, you're just a number. That's interesting.
Just a number.
So, yeah, you'll have to bear with me, trustees. Something's going on with technology here. So you're number four. I don't know why. There's no names listed, but there you go. You're alive.
There you go. Thank you, President Reich. I appreciate that I'm no longer a number. The FFC Committee, which is comprised of Mr. Chapa and Ms. Fowler. And myself, were charged with reviewing the committee. And the committee, on the recommendation of the administration, was asked to consider moving forward or extending the terms of some of our Financial Future Committee members that would be rolling off in this February and extending their terms by one year. So the charge gives us a ability to have 18 members serving on the committee. Our charge also allows us to extend the terms of our committee members for additional one-year term based on board approval. And this is what I'm bringing forward tonight. We also have some individual openings that have come about by individuals moving off of the committee. So the following is what our recommendation is, is to extend the appointments of the following individuals for a one-year term. Stephen Crumbie, Jeannie DeKine, Harry Flood, Ann Mason, and Sarah Spurrier. And in the case of Stephen Crumbie, he would continue as the chair of the committee. We would also appoint Selena Elizano, the sphere principal, to fill a vacancy as administrator. Appoint Christina Blank for the UEA, and Allison Wilkie, ATPE. These individuals have moved into leadership posts within their respected organizations and are given a seat on the committee themselves. We also have to replace David Willbanks, who has stepped down off of this committee. And we are asking one of our alternates in Kyle Fields to take that place. And then we will leave open the spot of Cheryl Hodge at this time, which is a non-salary, non-exempt employee position, because we don't have any alternates that fit that capacity to move into on the, onto the committee at this point. So with that, I make the motion that we remove to accept these appointments for another year of service on the FFC Committee.
Very good. And
Take a second.
Okay. So there's a motion by Mr. Hibbs, a second by Mrs. Fowler, to accept the names as well as the, is it the adjustment in the charge to move, I'm not sure how to word that cleanly. Where, so that the replacements can be appointed by committee?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none, please vote. All right. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and congratulations for the new members and the continuation of the existing members, and appreciate your continued service. It's very important. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move on to the next section, which is the Discussion/Action portion of our agenda. And the item that we have tonight is the Board Policy, FDA Local and Board Policy, FDB Local Revision. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Reich. And this evening, we bring a revision to board policy regarding transfers, student transfers. And Mr. Hill will present, in essence, we're recommending that we have a special transfer window opportunities throughout the year as demand increases to transfer to schools, both in and out of district. And so, these special windows would then have some policy implications. And so, Mr. Hill will explain those things. Mr. Hill?
Good evening, President Reich, board members, and Superintendent Cavassos. As mentioned, we're here to talk about board policy, FDA Local and FDB Local dealing with student transfers. And the purposes of this revision is to allow the superintendent or designee the opportunity to establish a special transfer window to consider transfers on a first-come, first-served basis, as well as to clean up some language in these policies that have been changed by the board in previous years. We just need to clean that up. FDA, thank you. FDA Local deals with inter-district transfers, and it basically says that non-resident students who want to become an AISD student, they shall file that application annually, and that we would consider that where there's space available. This policy also, both policies also call for the special programs or academies that they are outside of this transfer policy. They stand on that application process alone. Again, FDB is dealing with basically the same language, but it's dealing with transfers between schools for students that are already here within AISD. You have a better version of this, but here's the, you can see some of the red line language that's in FDA. You can see that in the packet that you've been provided. And again, we're striking some language and adding that clarifying language to get to the recommendation for the superintendent to be allowed to call the special windows. And the same with FDB. Those policies are, mirror each other. And so, the new language that we're recommending is to add, the superintendent or designee may be, may also establish a special transfer window to address intra-intra-district transfers, and that in that special window, all applicants for transfer be considered on a first-come, first-served basis. In the regular, general transfer window, as we would call it, there is a priority of full-time employees would get priority one, AISD residents would get priority two, City of Arlington but not within the AISD would get priority three, and then all others would get priority four. We're asking that in the special window, that we would go on a first-come, first-served basis. And so, that's what this policy is asking for. Again, we would recommend that the board approve those policies as they are revised, and we'll take questions or discussion at this time.
Didn't get a response.
As if your head wasn't big enough already.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Reich, we'll move on and keep talking about questions. Let me just thank Mr. Hill and Dr. Kavassos, as we started exploring this just last year, we started tinkering and seeing what we could do on this, and we did a small piece of this to test it, a little beta test last year, and we think it works out well. And I have to thank our, our Governance Committee that worked on this and helped review this policy, Mr. Chapa and Ms. Walton, as we went through this. I think some clear points, just to clear up what Mr. Hill said, we're still having the policy and the transfer window is still open, where, as we've said many times in the past, children of full-time employees, we're gonna reward our employees first, first and foremost, they're critical to this district, most critical thing we have is rewarding the employees of this district, and especially those that want their children to be in different schools. And then we have AIST residents, our taxpayers or what they're doing on these residents, and then we have all other requests coming through. So we still have that window that's open, this is allowing a window, a secondary window that can be happening, happen at that time, Dr. Kavassos or his designee can't open windows after that, but the first window will always be based on how we calculate it and what you see in FDB Local from that process. This is allowing the FDA Local of a secondary window to make sure we have seats filled and make sure schools that have openings, we have a little more flexibility with our staff to be able to offer some of these opportunities. I think it's a well-vetted policy that we asked lots of questions about and reviewed, and I thank the staff for being innovative and thinking through all the work process on this policy.
Very good, I appreciate that, and this is a discussion-action item, so at any time. Okay, very good. Mr. Hibbs, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Hogg and or Mr. Hill, one of you two probably can help me on this, and I would have asked it earlier if I had thought about it during our dinner meeting, but you mentioned that you went through numbers one through four of all from in-district to all others, basically. And you mentioned on the third, it would be non-AIST but City of Arlington residents. Just so people understand, the City of Arlington actually encompasses several school districts, because the boundaries of Arlington and the boundaries of the school district are actually different.
That's correct.
So in this, two examples of this case, what we would be looking at, remind me, or correct me if I'm wrong, but one, South Arlington is encompassed in Mansfield.
Correct.
And then North Arlington, where Veridian is today, would be ATB.
That's correct.
So we're talking about individuals from those areas that are within the city limits would be categorized under that.
That's correct.
That's how they would be prioritized, correctly?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, okay, I just wanna make sure that there was clarity there, because I can, I can only venture to guess right now, people would not understand that just because they don't understand the boundaries that were made by the state many, many years before Arlington became what it is today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I would second whatever your motion is.
You don't even know what it is! Okay. We have lost all control.
Wait till you hear one of my motions.
Right, that's, that's what I'm thinking. I, I have, I have a question, and certainly if there's other trustees, please indicate so. So I, first off, I think this is a great policy enhancement, I'll definitely be supporting this. My question is, how, how is the communication going to roll out to the city, you know, our district, obviously, but as Mr. Hibbs mentioned, the, the Veridian folks, the people in Mansfield, how are we going to communicate this and effectively?
So that, that's a very good question, and one that we've been collaborating internally on, is to, once, once, if and when this is approved, we're gonna work with Anita and her team to push it out, communicating with principals, social media, district websites, and every outlet that we can get the word out, we're gonna be making sure that we get that information out to those who may be interested in it. The, we're really trying to get that communication lined up so that there's enough time between when the policy is approved and when we would potentially open that second window to make sure that we've got enough time to get it out.
Okay.
So every media outlet, every opportunity that we have to get it out, we're gonna take advantage of.
Good, good, and that, that was one of my considerations, that this is going to be potentially one of those, you know, with a first-come, first-served, they're, they're going to want that advance notice to prepare so that they can try to be first.
Right.
So just as long as we're setting, setting it up that way, that's great. Very good. Are there any other trustees that have questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, Dr. Reich, and I agree with you on the, we talked a lot with staff about the communication and the plans, so we get very clear of the first window, that includes our, our in-district transfers and staff, and then to the secondary window. So it is, we, we know ample communication and explanation needs, especially beyond the website, which is gonna be the number one place people go to get questions, 'cause otherwise, we get lots of phone calls, and we hopefully make it easy enough for them to understand, 'cause answering tons of questions, while we love to do it, is sometimes not always the best use of time, so let's make it very clear for a full understanding for all of those. So at this time, I move for approval of FDA, FDA Local and FDB Local as attached.
All right, very good. So we have a motion by Mr. Hogg to accept the revisions to FDA and FDB Locals, and a second by Mr. Hibbs, is there any discussion? All right, then seeing none, please vote. And motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hill, for the information, thank you to the Governance Committee for, for your work in vetting through this, really an innovative strategy, we've, we've really come a great long positive direction over time with our transfer processes to open up the opportunities for more students to benefit from Arlington ISD, so thank you for that very much. Next, we're moving to the consent agenda, first, are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none. Then we will move to consent, and Ms. Powell, if you could please share the bids with us.
Thank you, President Reich, board members, Dr. Kavassos, we have for your consideration this evening donations totaling seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars, and that brings our year-to-date total to seven hundred and fifty-six thousand and ninety-one dollars. We also have seven bids on the agenda tonight, and in all cases, administration is recommending the lowest bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Are there any questions, any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept consent. Number eight, that must be you.
Move that we accept.
Oh, sorry, sorry, all right, all right. All right, thank you, Mr. Chapa, is there a second?
I'll second it.
You'll second it? Do me a favor, hit your request to speak, so I know what number you are.
Number seven.
You are seven.
One, two, three, four.
Wow, the, the code talker, right? Very good. Obviously more advanced than my simple brain. The auditor. Very good. All right. Thank you, so we have a, a motion by Mr. Chapa, and a second by Ms. Fowler to approve consent. Any further discussion, seeing none, please vote. Consent passes unanimously. All right, moving on to our agenda discussion items, the first one is the update on the long-range financial planning for the general operating budget and capital needs, Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, President Reich, and this evening we'd like to bring an update on, on our financial planning, long-term. We have had a series of capital needs committees, community meetings, as well as discussions with our FFC about potential revenue and things like that, so we thought it'd be important, and there will be several of these as the spring semester continues, to bring an update as to where we are thus far on, on these efforts. So I'll invite Cindy Powell, our CFO, to present that information and give us an update.
All right. Well, good evening again, Dr. Reich, board members, Dr. Kavassos. As Dr. Kavassos just mentioned, we, we have been doing a significant amount of work in, really since fall of 2017 around long-range financial planning, and we have discussed as a group before that we have a number of financial priorities in this district, and you see them listed here. These things do not exist in isolation, they are very, very much integrated. It's important that we have healthy financial circumstance and a strong fund balance, a good, strong general operating budget to carry out our strategic plan and offer the kind of programming that, that we, as a community, have identified as priorities for the district. We also have some significant needs in terms of our capital investments. We are in year five of our 2014 bond program, it was intended to be a five-year program. We spoke with the community in 2014 about the fact that, that the 2014 bond program was, is not a one-and-done, there will always be work that needs to be done, we are a very large district, and so we have some very significant needs on an ongoing basis. So we have been engaged, really since fall of 2017, in studying these needs and determining how to best plan for them, and both our general operating needs and our capital needs, while they're funded through separate tax rates and separate budgets, they very much go hand in hand, and so we, we have been studying how to best align all of that work. In terms of the general operating budget, we have discussed in this setting before that we, we have adopted a deficit budget this year. We expect to have deficit budgets in the coming years, and that is largely because the way the school funding system works in the state of Texas. You hear us say on occasion that, that system is broken, to the point the legislature and the state leadership have named that one of their top priorities for this current legislative session. And so we're watching with, with a great deal of interest what happens there. In the state of Texas, there are very prescriptive laws for school districts in how you can tax and what rate you can levy without needing to go to the voters for a, for approval on rate. We are taxing at a dollar four, and that's the highest that we can tax without getting specific voter approval. And so that has involved a lot of our discussion over the last year, is our general operating budget and what our options are there, and what would be required in terms of an MNO tax rate change, and how to go about that if that's the route that we choose to go. In terms of capital needs, our priorities around capital needs center on providing appropriate learning spaces and sufficient learning spaces, adequate, just adequate space, physical space for our entire enrollment and for the programs that we want to offer to our students, also making sure that we protect the investment in our buildings, and just like our homes, we have to, to take care of some very routine, but occasionally very expensive upgrades, everything from roofs to flooring systems, and upgrading HVAC systems and parking lots, to make sure that our buildings provide the kind of learning environments that we want for our students. Also making sure that we have current technology, just a very basic tool in today's world for student learning, and then increasing access to programs, which involves physically getting kids to and from a program by transporting them to and from their, from their homes to schools where we are offering special programs and returning them, and then even during the day, transporting kids from their home high schools, in some cases, to the Career Tech Center for special program opportunities, and then back again, because we know that in our district, with seventy-three percent of our students who qualifying for free and reduced lunch, we have some significant financial challenges, and if we do not provide transportation, in many cases, we have students who will not be able to take advantage of these program offerings that we have available. So making sure that we have access for students to physically get to programs, along with just providing fine arts instruments to anyone who wants to participate in band or orchestra, and providing appropriate technology for them. So all those kinds of things fall into that access category, and then maintaining a standard of excellence for all of our students and all of our programming. So through our work, and we came to the board in September, and we had a work session, actually, around the topic of the general operating budget itself, and what some of our long-range needs are, and what our options are for addressing those needs. We came back to the board in October then and had a discussion on capital needs and how to approach those. So what we've learned from all of our discussions is that we do have options here, and one of the opportunities that we've identified is to have both a tax ratification election that would allow us to raise the tax rate that supports our general operating budget, and a bond election to take care of our capital needs for the next five years. We could do those at the same time. Again, the, the needs and the objectives of each are very interrelated, and so we would look to do these likely in November, if, if we continue to move down this path. So what we have identified is, again, doing both elections, that allows us to invest in our capital needs, allows us to take care of our general operating budget, and continue offering the kinds of programs that, that we intend to offer, and we can do this with a limited tax rate increase. We've had significant discussion around that in previous meetings. To help us evaluate and analyze priorities on, on both of these fronts, both the general operating budget and capital needs, we have two citizen committees who have been very actively engaged in studying our, our budget and our capital needs, our capital needs assessment, and state funding system, and the requirements around tax rates, and, and a number of topics. And so these two committees are actively working now, we want to update you on their work. So with the Financial Futures Committee, this is the committee that studies our general operating budget and our long-range financial needs, and makes recommendations to the board about how to best address those long-range financial needs. There are eighteen people on this committee tonight, we've continued the appointments of a little over half of, of the committee for another year. They meet about six times a year, and they're, they are charged with looking at a number of different things, everything from our budget itself, they look at enrollment trends, they look at property value trends, they have studied the state funding system, our legislative agenda, our operating efficiencies, and how we compare to other districts in terms of operating expenses per student. They've looked at how we compensate employees, and they've looked at how we staff our, our schools. So they have, they have invested a significant amount of time in understanding our world, if you will, and what some of our challenges are. They presented, that committee presented recommendations to the board in February of 2018, and this is a, a very succinct summary, if you will, of those recommendations. They recommended first that we invest in the overall elementary experience, and they gave specific examples of what that included, everything from pre-kindergarten to choice offerings, to investing in the facilities themselves. They also recommended that we evaluate the cost-effectiveness of our buildings and our programs and our personnel and, and services that we offer. They've also recommended that we continue providing competitive compensation, and that we invest in leadership development. And then finally, they made a recommendation that we consider lowering the INS tax rate, which is the tax rate that repays bonds, you sell bonds to pay for your capital needs, and that we increase our MNO tax rate, the rate that pays for the general operating budget, by equal amounts, so that we could strategically fund our needs in the general operating budget, and that... which is the tax rate that repays bonds, you sell bonds to pay for your capital needs, and that we increase our M&amp;O tax rate, the rate that pays for the general operating budget, by equal amounts so that we could strategically fund our needs in the general operating budget, and that would still give us room to also have a bond election. Our circumstances were such that our current outstanding debt would be declining over the coming years, and so the tax rate on the debt side is scheduled to decline in the coming years. That would allow us an opportunity to be able to afford another bond election and also a TRE. At the time we talked about this, we talked about the possibility of trying to do an equal swap so that the overall tax rate didn't change. As we progressed through the spring and into the new budget cycle and we have greater understanding of circumstances with the state funding system, we know that an equal swap is just not going to be what helps us in terms of managing needs on both sides, both the general operating budget and the capital side. We do believe very strongly that because of our circumstances with our property values and our declining debt, that we do have the opportunity to address both and do so with a very moderate tax rate increase. So the Financial Futures Committee has continued its work throughout this past spring and all the way until through January. We've had a meeting in January. And these are some of the topics that they've continued discussing, those investments in the elementary schools. And that has largely centered around both capital needs and also program offerings. In January, we spent an entire session talking about pre-kindergarten even and opportunities there and the gap that we have there in that we do not offer full-day pre-K in our district. They've also looked at legislative activities. This committee wrote a letter to the Commission on Public School Finance that met really for the past year and ultimately provided a report to the legislature for recommendations on how to address the state funding system. So our Financial Futures Committee, as a whole committee, wrote a letter to that commission, and so we were able to assist with that. And the end report from the commission is pretty well-aligned to the letter itself. So I'd like to think that we had some impact there. I think this district and this community have established themselves as being very engaged, and so I was very pleased with that effort. We've had a couple of meetings where we talked about operational efficiencies. We've looked at what we do in plant services and in security and in transportation and the things, the efforts we make to try to make sure that we are operating as efficiently as possible in those areas so that we have as much funding as possible available for direct classroom instruction. And we've talked about enrollment management. We've looked at enrollment trends. We've looked at ways that we were going to target enrollment efforts, including student transfers. And even tonight, the board has taken action on two board policies that will help in that area. So this committee's been very engaged in our current work. I expect that they will come back probably in April with their next report to the board. The other committee that is working actively right now is our Capital Needs Steering Committee. And again, in October, we came to the board, made a presentation about capital needs through the year 2025. And then the following meeting, the board determined that there was enough need there to warrant seating a Capital Needs Steering Committee to review our assessment and our needs and to prioritize as a community what they determined to be the things we most needed, again, to carry us out through 2025. In December, this board appointed individuals to the Capital Needs Steering Committee. There are 37 people on that committee. They started meeting in January 8th, I believe, was their first meeting. And we've had two full committee meetings since then. We've had a round of community dialogues that we'll talk about in just a minute. So they are very actively engaged in this work. And they will continue meeting through May and will issue a report to the board in June recommending what they have identified as capital priorities for the district. Their charge, again, is to look at the capital needs assessment that the district performed over the last year and also to take community input to help inform the work. And one of the things in their charge was that they look at the recommendation that the Financial Futures Committee made to this board about a bond election and a TRE and understand the impact that doing both would have on the tax, the total tax rate. So what we are planning at the moment is that the next time the Capital Needs Steering Committee has a full meeting, that will be March 19th, and at that meeting, we will have a brief presentation from Financial Futures Committee to that committee, to the Capital Needs Steering Committee, around that topic. And so the Chair of the Financial Futures Committee, Stephen Crumbie, will make that presentation to the Capital Needs Steering Committee. So we've tried to lay the foundation already on what a TRE is and why, what the general operating budget needs are and how decisions that we make on the capital side may also have implications on the general operating side. So they've got a real good sense of that already. And so we have been working with cooperative strategies. We knew them previously in 2013, as DeYoung Richter. They helped us put together the 2014 bond package, and they are back assisting us in facilitating our current Capital Needs Steering Committee. And so this particular graphic shows pretty simply the planning process. The big circles are things that the district engages in, and then the smaller circles are the committee itself, the Capital Needs Steering Committee. So the two small blue dots indicate that the two regular meetings that the Capital Needs Steering Committee's already had in January. The large black circle next to those two smaller dots is the indication of the community dialogues. We had four different community dialogues. We held two on Monday and two on Tuesday in different locations throughout the district and invited people to come in and hear an overview of the things that we are considering. And then we asked them to complete a questionnaire online. They completed the questionnaire individually, and then they would discuss at their table in a shorter version of the questionnaire, all to help inform the work of the Capital Needs Steering Committee and help us all assess what the community preferences are and community priorities are in terms of programming. That information has been submitted from those committee meetings. That questionnaire is now actually available on our website, and anyone can take it, along with the presentation that was given that night or those two nights is available online. And so I encourage people to log on, it's a very short questionnaire, and give us your feedback because, as I've said repeatedly to our Capital Needs Steering Committee and at these community dialogues, the more of us that have input into this process, the better the end product will be, and will be more reflective of what we, as a community, value and prioritize. So our next steps are going to be, starting next week, Monday and Tuesday, we have subcommittee meetings. We have three subcommittees formed from the Capital Needs Steering Committee as a whole. We have a Safety, Security, and Technology Subcommittee, a Transportation Subcommittee, and a Fine Arts Subcommittee. And those subcommittees will meet Monday and Tuesday, and we'll hear presentations from administration. Cooperative strategies will be there to facilitate the discussions. And again, continuing to the deeper dive into the details that we've identified, the needs that we've identified for the next five years and how those things connect to our work and to our strategic plan. The committee will then meet a couple more times, one in mid-March and then again in April, and then we'll have another round of these community dialogues. And between now and then, we will begin to kind of narrow in on those things that we want to recommend going forward, programming opportunities, and the capital needs to support those opportunities for the next five years. And then we'll take the more specific information back to the community. Again, have four meetings, we'll try to hit north, south, east, and west with those community dialogues and allow people yet another opportunity to have some input in the process before ultimately the committee meets two final times and then determines what its recommendations will be to this board, and they will report to the board in June. So in terms of the capital needs assessment, a real high-level look at the things that our steering committee is considering. In terms of program offerings, we are discussing full-day pre-K and the fact that Arlington ISD today only, does not have full-day pre-K. You can't attend a full-day program, it is a paid program, a very small program. But we have identified a need to offer full-day programming. We think that we have seen the effects of not having a full-day program when you look at student performance and social needs of our kids compared to some of the other districts around us that do have a full-day program. So we've had extensive conversation around that, also around both the junior high and high school fine arts dual-language academies. And in terms of the junior high, we have very specifically identified that Gunn Junior High is, would be a location that we would recommend for housing, the junior high program, it would be a school within a school. And that planning work is well underway with an architect and with our instructional folks in determining what that program would look like. And so we are already making strides towards that, and we've shared that information with the steering committee. Also looking at a need for continued expansions and continued offerings in career tech program areas. Our Career Tech Center has opened virtually full, and so we have more demand than we have space, and that's a good thing. We also have some needs in some of our traditional campuses, our high school campuses, for more appropriate spaces to allow students to take their foundational courses, their freshman, sophomore courses that they need to take on their home campus before then they move to the Career Tech Center for their upper-level courses. We actually have two campuses that do not have welding labs, and so that's just an example of the kind of thing that we've identified as a need and have spoken with our Capital Needs Steering Committee about potentially funding in a next bond package. We've also discussed some very significant facility needs, and part of those include actually replacing three older schools. We've talked about a need to replace Carter Junior High, Webb Elementary, and Thornton Elementary. These are schools that we use today. They're safe. They simply are at the end of their lives, and they do not offer a 21st-century learning environment like we need to offer to all of our students. And we are reaching a point where the cost to renovate the schools, to provide that kind of learning space, really are too extreme and do not warrant that investment. We're better off to look at replacing the school. So in all three cases, we need to school, and we need it where it is, but in the same attendance zones where they are. So we're not talking about closing these schools, we're talking about rebuilding them. Also looking at a need to replace the district's operations center. We've dramatically outgrown that. We don't even have adequate restroom space for our transportation employees. We don't have adequate space to park all of our buses. And so, and the facility itself is very inefficient, very old, and so we have a real strong need to replace that facility. We talked about improvements to fine arts spaces that include even additions at our high schools for new band halls. And then we would go in and renovate the other spaces at the high schools, the other fine arts spaces, and then everybody would move up and into a bigger space. And we have growing fine arts programs, and we recognize this as an investment to allow those programs to continue to grow. Also auditorium finishes. We've done upgrades on the stage areas at all six of our high schools in this current bond program. We've installed new lighting systems, new rigging, new sound systems, and new multimedia systems, but we have a need still for disfinishes, paint and what have you in these facilities to refresh those. And then improvements to athletic facilities, basic improvements to our gymnasiums at the high schools and junior highs, our locker room spaces, and also to our existing competition and practice fields at the junior highs and high schools. At the high schools, we need to replace our tracks, or we will over the next five years. A track is, has a useful life to it, and then it wears down, you have to resurface it. So resurfacing those tracks, replacing the turf on the competition high school fields and making restroom upgrades, making sure that we have the appropriate number of restrooms in those sites, in those stadiums to support our average attendance, and ticket booths and concession stands. So that's what we mean when we talk about athletics improvements. In terms of needs, other needs that we've identified, this is a very summarized list, but at the elementary campuses, we have a need to replace many of the gyms. Our older schools have what we call gyms, they're really more like activity centers. Many of them are separate structures, and they're small, and they have very low ceilings, and they just are not conducive to offering the kind of wellness programs, PE programs that we've set as standards in our district and that our newer elementaries have. So we've included dollars, included on the list a need to replace those, as well as making enhancements to our playgrounds at all of our elementary schools. Our last district-wide investment in playgrounds was through the 1999 bond program. Most of our schools don't have shade structures over the playgrounds, and we all know how hot it gets here, so those are things that we've identified as needs. And also just ensuring educational adequacy, everything from lighting to in classrooms and libraries, flooring, electrical outlets and service. So at the elementary school, that's a good summary of those needs. At the secondaries, again, we've talked about a need, identified the need for our junior high fine arts dual-language academy. This was a commitment we made to the community when we first spoke with everyone about the 2014 bond package, and we said we would create a pathway to a junior high program. Gunn Junior High is the school that we think is a very good fit for that, it's very centrally located. It's a, it has a very nice-sized campus that can support this program, and this would be a school within a school. Also beginning to consider that high school, Fine Arts Dual Language Academy, and what that offering would be. Then also enhancements to our junior high STEM labs, again, fine arts additions, instrument storage at, mainly at elementaries and junior highs, and then career tech renovations and additions that we spoke about, athletic facility improvements, locker rooms and locker replacements, and then, again, junior high athletic field improvements. Making sure that we have the right kinds of spaces for special program offerings to ensure that we can continue to offer parents' choice programs that they are seeking, and that's, again, a strategy to help us and manage our enrollment and serve our community. And then improvements for everyone, everything from a high-security key system to energy management efforts to make sure that we're being very efficient in how we use and consume electricity and natural gas and water, restroom renovations. We took input from principals and almost to a person. The principal said they needed restroom renovations at their schools. We know that, we see that in our own assessments. That's something that, systemically, we have not done anything with in either of the last two bond programs, so we have some real needs there, as well as with our kitchens and accessibility. So all of these are examples of the things that we've identified as needs and that we're, that our Capital Needs Steering Committee is studying. We also have needs for, in the area of security and technology, fine arts, and transportation beyond facility needs. All of the needs that we have identified total $1.2 billion. The work of this committee is to prioritize those needs into what we most need in the next five years, and so that work will continue again through the spring. We are also, we have We are also, we have engaged Raymond Turco and Associates to conduct a phone survey. That survey work is is wrapped up and now we have put that same survey online for all of our employees to take and it's available through next week. And so we are really encouraging all of our employees to spend a few minutes and and give us their feedback on these needs. So we intend to have a called board work session early March is what we're hoping for, where we can report out on the results of the survey work that Ray Turco and Associates has has completed and also the results of input gathered at those community dialogue meetings that I was referring to and update on the the committee's work in more detail. Again, opportunities for input. I grade out the telephone survey that you see there because that the telephone survey itself is complete. The employee online survey is is still active, as is a community questionnaire that's available on our website. Both of those are available through next week. The the community questionnaire is available until February 14th. The employee online survey is available through the end of next week on the 15th. We will have, as I mentioned earlier, another round of those community dialogues to take input and that'll be in April. With that, be happy to answer any questions you have.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Powell, for the the detail of of information. Quite a quite a large undertaking that we're all participating in right now, that's for sure. Are there trustees that have any questions? Mrs. Fowler, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Raish. Cindy, on the the part about the junior high fine arts and dual language, I'm excited about that and I think we definitely, from the the elementary academies, need something at the junior high level. I don't know if it's a worry or a concern. What what do we anticipate that will do to the current programs, say at Bowles or Young with maybe the choir programs? They've worked so hard to build those and to have those strong programs. And then if people, you know, are thinking of leaving and and going to the other junior high for that program, do we think that may hurt those programs?
No, I I don't. We have a growing number of students participating in arts across the district. This is a very specialized program that is not just the arts, but it's also the dual language piece. These students will be matriculating up really through Jones and through Corey. And so I I don't anticipate that we will see a drain on any of these other programs. I think it only strengthens the district's overall fine arts programming.
Dr. Cavassos had some information.
Yeah, in just a context for the Jones and Corey cohorts and academy, both of those schools accept students from across the district. So it's not really pulling from one area in specific. So their effect, if you will, is already been part of that cohort because they're coming from all over the district. And as they matriculate as a cohort up to to the junior high, they will be the ones that will be both having the language and the fine arts experience. So it's a unique program for students that have matriculated already through that that system. But the bigger piece is that they're coming from all schools in the district. They're not pulling from a boundary area and stuff like that. It just happened to be located at Corey and Jones.
Thank you. And a and a follow-up question, Ms. Powell. If if we're funneling to Gunn, will those students then go on to Arlington High or will they be able to go where they want to?
So we haven't, in terms of a high school program, we're in the very, very early stages of talking about what the program itself looks like and have not identified, you know, if if it will be a pro a school within a school. We also know we had the Fine Arts Center coming online and there will be some opportunity for specialized classes there. And so we have not identified a particular campus where that program could be located. That's part of of the longer range planning work for administration.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mrs. Fowler, Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Raish. And I to just respond real quick to a concern that Ms. Fowler had because I've heard some of the same concerns, particularly with respect to the Bowles and Young programs. And and the way that I've explained it to those who brought those concerns to me is a bit the same response that that Dr. Cavassos gave and that you gave Cindy and that these are district-wide programs. They're being at at Corey, it's being phased in one year at a time. But also I think something that's important to remember is that one of the reasons, going back to the capital needs steering committee that met in 2013 and 14 and put together the 2014 bond, one of the reasons that Corey was selected to begin with is because it had its enrollment had dropped to a point where the building was substantially underutilized. And that was also the case with the elementary schools that are very close in proximity to Corey and that was Wood and Moore. And so as that program has phased into Corey one year at a time, the attendance zone that exists for Corey has disappeared one year at a time to would be being split between Wood and Moore. So the students who were intended to go to Bowles from the beginning, if this program had never existed at Corey, are still their endpoint is still going to be Bowles or respectively Young. And and I've also heard counter concern points from parents at at Wood and Moore who feel like, you know, that they they have noticed that there are more students going to those campuses as a result of that boundary change. And so I I've heard those same concerns and I just have allayed those concerns by saying those students that you expected to get, they're still coming to you at Bowles and Young, they're not going anywhere. And so I think that's important to something that's important to keep in mind as well. I, you know, going, I got a big start in this district being on the 13, 14 Capital Needs Steering Committee. And so I just want to take a moment to highlight how the stuff that you've just discussed ties in so well with what we worked on in 2013 and 14 and even before that. And if you look at the slide where you looked at considerations with the facility deeds, improvements to facilities, fine art spaces and athletic facilities, I think in many ways this ties into work we started with the 2014 bond, but even going before that, you know, Mr. Hibbs and Dr. Raish and 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 Mr. Hogg and Ms. Mazer on the board, there was a and and others who recognized a serious issue with overcrowding in East Arlington and committed both fund, I believe it was fund balance funds and a combination of bond funds to make a difference there. And so when we're talking about our aging facilities, I think people who are familiar with this district know that the ones that we're looking at by and large are located in East and Central Arlington. And so it's I want to commend the board members who came before me, but also the work of the committee and also your staff that have continued to emphasize that we have a lot to do over in East and Central Arlington with respect to, you know, changing population density, but also the aging of the facilities and keep not taking our eye off of that ball as well. So I'm very glad to see that we're looking at facilities like Carter, Webb and Thornton and to the extent that our capacity allows. I mean, we know that there's others that that need some attention too and aren't providing, you know, while adequate, not the 21st learning 21st century learning facilities that you referenced. And so, you know, being aggressive on that as we can. I also wanted to touch on, because I've heard some early feedback from these community dialogues, I visited the one at Bowles the other night, and there were a few people who had concerns that we have things like athletic facilities, gyms, locker rooms. But the thing that people seem to hone in on are stadiums. And so something that I've emphasized in those discussions, because the people who've come to me are very concerned that when they see that we're looking at using, we see a need for, you know, a stadium, they think of the facilities that they've seen on the nightly news that cost 60 to 70 million dollars. And so, you know, I think we can, I can come, I'm only speaking for myself, but, you know, I that's not where this district is. It's not where the district, I think, is going to go. I think we have, you know, compared to some other districts, we have some modest facilities that are needing, you know, an upgrade at Wildman and Cravens. You know, we it's no secret anymore that we're kind of touch and go year to year with whether or not we're going to have the facility at UTA. And so when when we're talking about stadiums, I think it's important for the community to understand that we're not looking at pie in the sky things that have happened in other districts and committing an enormous portion of our bond to athletic facilities and making a big splash in that way. That's just not the way that this district has operated and I don't think that that's going to change in the future. We're looking at at changing the athletic facilities that we have, upgrading them, maybe investing in a third one to allow us to sustain the programming that we already have in place. And so I think that's important for the community to know going forward. And then I could I could go on and on because this stuff, you know, really excites me because it's all about serving students and there's so much need and we're going to have to prioritize it. But I I'm glad to see also that the emphasis here, that it sounds like, and something that I think got a lot of play in the community dialogue that I went to at Bowles, is with respect to our elementary school playgrounds. Because as you referenced, it's been quite some time since there was an investment with bond funds into those playgrounds. We're coming up with a district standard for that. And in fact, we there was a decision made just this week by the Community Engagement Committee to task our Student Health Advisory Committee, which is made up of community members, with coming up with a district-wide standard and in investigating what it means for a playground to be adequate in the 21st century. And that means coming up all the, you know, all all the way with to accessibility issues and ADA considerations that while we're not present the last time that this district substantially invested invested in the playgrounds. And so I think that's very important and it's going to be a big investment by the district because it's it's we have over 50 elementary school campuses. But I'm glad that that is something I think that we would have really liked to get to in 2013 and 14, but we're it sounds like that's going to be a priority for this capital needs committee, or at least that's what I heard from the community dialogue and the committee members who were present at that one. And with that, I'm going to to go ahead and and not discuss all the great things that that are in here, but I would strongly encourage any community members who didn't have a chance to come to the last round of community dialogues to try to look out for the notices of those that are coming in the future because the community's feedback is very important. We do listen to it. And it's it's what we hear at those forums is going to help play a large role in the prioritization of the needs in if we move forward with a bond type program. Because as you highlighted there at the end, there's great need and that's a really big number and it's just not going to be something that we can fully, you know, there's always a trade-off, there's always prioritization, we're not going to be able to fully do that. But the community can help us decide what's most important to them.
You're exactly right. And if I could comment, you you've hit on something there that I should mention is that all of this is part of good financial planning and having a long-range roadmap, if you will, to our facility needs, a facility master plan. And that is what this process with the Capital Needs Steering Committee ultimately yields is a facility master plan. And and we've recognized and have said from the start that, you know, we identify these needs and we have tremendous need across the district, but it's not something that that you do in a year or even five years' time. It's something that you master plan over a series, over many years in a series of bond elections. And then also, you know, everything that we've done in terms of our assessment has been to standards and to ensure equity across all of our schools. And so we've been very mindful of that, so.
Very good. Great comments, Mr. Chapa. Ms. Walton. Hey, what happened there?
Thank you, Dr. Raish. I just wanted to clarify one thing. I I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but back to Mrs. Fowler's questions about the Gunn facility, Gunn Junior High facility, that will still have all of the access to sports and music, UIL competitions and all that kind of the thing, just like any regular junior high would?
Indeed, yes.
Okay. And the other thing to follow up to Mr. Chapa, those Dialogue Two meetings are April 9th and 10th, so save the dates. Thank you.
I don't see any other lights indicating further discussion. I do have just a couple of things for, as Mr. Chapa stated, the opportunity to participate in these community dialogues is is extremely important. And so just to reiterate, we have for us to share as a team out there on social media, emails, whatever, word of mouth, that the link is on the ISD website and that's up until next Thursday, the 14th. Okay. And along with that, is it only the survey? Is there any briefing or intro or or context, like at the dialogues, you do a very good job of kind of setting the the stage, so?
Yes, when you when you click the link from our homepage, it takes you to another page that explains the work that's taking place. And at the bottom, there's a link to the presentation that we gave at the community dialogues. And so you can you can scroll through that, see that before you answer the questionnaire if you want to.
Very good, very good. And this is somewhat of a of a segue into our our next item, but we don't have to really discuss the details. I'm I'm just curious, with our current legislative session, do you see or foresee the the tackling of school finance, et cetera, being something that will yield this body to not have to consider a TRE? Or is it probably going to be around the fringes and we're still going to have to consider TRE?
The first question is, no, I don't see them doing enough that allows us to not or have to look at also increasing our MNO tax rate through a TRE. In terms of nibbling around the edges, you know, that's kind of remains to be seen, too. What we know is they're talking about rearranging a lot of the existing funding. They are talking about some additional investment and we'll talk about that in just a minute in the next presentation. You know, where it ends up at the end, we don't know and we won't know until June. And we're hopeful that they can complete the work on school finance in the regular session. That kind of remains to be seen, too. That may wind up in a special session. You know, I I anticipate that there will be some limited additional investment in public ed. I think it's going to be very targeted and very tied to specific outcomes or specific choices for districts to make in order to access those dollars.
Right, right. I I appreciate that and I I think it's important for for this board to to comprehend that although there may be some relief coming, it's not necessarily going to change our our trajectory at this point so that we're, whether it's a special session or not, it we will we will still have until whatever that August date is to make the decision and determination. Okay, very good. All right, I don't see any other lights, so we will move on then to the next discussion item and guess if you, I'd like to give you the opportunity to rest and sit down a little bit, but this is you, Ms. Powell.
We can just get the presentation changed out here. We will be good.
While you're moving on that, I I do want to thank you and the Governance Committee, Mr. Hogg as chair, that this is something that we will have on our agenda throughout this legislative session because these are going to continue to be fast-moving, very liquid situation. So thank you for taking the time and and in keeping us updated as a board.
Great, all right. Well, so to start talking about the legislative session, you know, you hear the term go slow to go fast. And so at the early part of a legislative session, they move pretty slowly and yeah, yeah, that's true. They, by the by the state statute, there are certain times, certain timeframes in which they have to honor, for example, they cannot deliberate in full chambers any legislation for the first 60 days unless it's the budget or unless it's something that the governor has deemed to be an emergency. And he has now done that on several topics, including school finances, we'll see in just a minute. But I want to start first with the Commission on Public School Finance. This commission was formed in the last legislative session, in in special session. That committee has met for about a year now, made up of senators and and representatives and school personnel and community members and business people. And they have, they presented their report to the board on December 31st and their charge was to examine school funding and recommend ways for overhauling the funding system to make it more effective and more equitable. So some of their their recommendations, you can see the the summary here, they do recommend a significant, as they call it, new investment in public education and they recommend that the state carry a a larger share of the overall funding burden. And they recommend that that the legislature take action that would reduce, recapture and would reduce the the burden on local taxpayers. They also made some significant recommendations, as you'll hear in a minute, around, again, repurposing existing dollars and aligning really the entire funding system with some very specific outcomes. This, there are a couple of slides here that I've This, there are a couple of slides here that I took out of a presentation that was created by one of the members on the commission, Todd Williams. And so this particular slide shows very simply the, the overview of the major recommendations from the commission and what they were targeting. They targeted a lot of their recommendations around, specifically around third-grade reading, and then also post-secondary readiness and access. A third piece then was attracting and retaining effective educators, and then that fourth piece was addressing some of the outdated current pieces of the school finance system. This slide, there's two slides here, and each, each column, if you will, summarizes broad categories of recommendations made by the commission. The first one is very key to some of the discussions we're having right now with our Financial Futures Committee and with the Capital Needs Steering Committee, because it's around third-grade reading, and this is where they really focus in on funding potentially for pre-K and for full-day pre-K specifically. They have a recommendation for a, an allotment for students, every student in grades kindergarten through third that are either low-income or English-language learners would qualify for the allotment. You could then spend it on students in pre-K through grades three. And the idea is that this would generate enough money to allow a district to fund a full-day pre-K program. But it does not require you to do that, it gives discretion on how you use it, but, but that's really where it's targeted. And then also some outcomes-based funding, based on how you perform on that third-grade reading assessment. And the incentive payments will be differentiated based on income status for a district. And so the idea being that the districts that have greater concentrations of need, as they perform better, they will earn more money than, conceptually, than, than districts with less need. Then they also, they have some smaller grant-type programs that they've identified with, for targeting third-grade literacy. In the area of post-secondary readiness, again, this is incentive-based funding, and the funding would come to a district based on the number of your students who graduate deemed to be college-ready, and that is, is determined by students who pass ACT, SAT, TSI. And then also in, tries to incentivize students completing the FAFSA and TASFA forms in order to help promote students' interest in, in, and encourage them, more students, to attend higher ed. In the area of attracting and retaining effective educators, they've allotted a sum of money, at the moment it starts out at $100 million, and it would grow potentially over time, over 10-year period up to $1 billion, for school districts that want to implement a multi-measure evaluation system for teachers. Again, this is an optional thing, but to access these dollars, you have to basically move to a performance-paced system. And it's designed to get teachers into those more challenging circumstances and, and in front of students who have greater needs. In terms of the outdated funding components of the existing formulas, they've talked about some very significant changes in how funding is delivered to schools. One of the big ones is eliminating what is called the Cost of Education Index. That is a factor in the funding formulas that has been in place, it has not been touched since, I think, 1993. And it is supposed to account for the higher costs, the incremental costs, for certain districts to hire staff. It's mainly based on, on the higher cost of living in certain areas. Big districts across the state have higher costs for personnel, because there's more competition in the area. And so big districts recognize a significant increment to their funding through the state funding formulas, through that CEI component. The commission is recommending doing away with that. Again, it has not been updated since 1993. Previous lawsuits against the state over the finance system always hit on the Cost of Education Index, that it hasn't been updated. It's, it's a very complicated measure, and it's been very difficult for anyone to determine how to effectively update that on a routine basis. So the commission said, well, you know, maybe we should just get rid of it entirely and take those dollars and instead put them into the basic allotment or to other parts of the funding system, and, and not even talk about any kind of differentiated cost to operate across the state. As an example, in, they're very careful to say you cannot look at this in isolation, you have to look at the whole plan. But if we did look at it in isolation, the Cost of Education generates roughly $37.5 million of funding for Arlington ISD. So if that went away and those dollars were not replaced to us in some other fashion, then, then we would be $37.5 million short of what we have today. So that's one example. There are also some individual funding formulas, like the Gifted and Talented allotment, the High School allotment, and several other things that they, they recommend, just doing away with the allotments, but taking those same dollars and then using them for other purposes inside the funding formulas. There's also a provision in their recommendation, several recommendations around goals that they want individual school boards to set and the state as a whole. They, they are trying to align the K-2, K-12 objectives to the higher ed objective of 60 by 30. And so what they are recommending is that the state set a goal of 60% proficiency by 2030 in third-grade reading. So again, going back to that early literacy, that goal, and then also requiring that school boards set three-years and five-year goals for meeting that same metric. And then also around specific things to do with the college career and military readiness. So they're looking to, for boards to actually set as goals, things specifically aligned to the funding system and how you would get your funding. And then other things, the recapture is a, a major discussion around the state under the current system. When your property value per student reaches a certain threshold, then some of that money is recaptured by the state, it doesn't even stay local. When you, when you tax the property, then there's a portion of it that goes back to the state. And so as property values in general have risen across the state, more and more districts are finding themselves in a situation where they are subject to recapture. If we were to raise our MNO tax rate above $1.06, we would be subject to a little bit of recapture, not, not much, but some little bit of that. So they're trying to find ways to limit that, that folds in with the whole discussion about property tax relief. And then the last piece there on school finance, tweaking the tier-two portion of the funding formulas and actually tying that directly to the basic allotment, again, to increase some access on guaranteed funding above the, the current $1 compressed rate. The other thing that occurred as the session was starting, the Comptroller released its revenue estimate for the upcoming biennium. It is a little over 8% higher than the last biennium. This is important because it tells the legislature how much money they have to spend, and this, it, it's very apparent, and, and leadership acknowledges that they've got some money to put towards their priorities, and their priorities, again, have been stated as being public ed, funding, and property tax relief. So the session began January 8th, they'll meet until May 27th in regular session. As of today, there have been 2,163 bills filed. If you compare that to the total number of bills filed in the last session, we're about, we have, there have been about a third as many bills filed, but again, they're still very early in the process, they, bills can be filed through March the 8th. Few highlights of the session so far, we do have a, a new speaker, it's Dennis Bonn of Angleton. And then our own legislators have been, some of them have been appointed to some rather significant committees that very directly impact things, very important to us. Chris Turner has been appointed the Chair of the House Higher Ed Committee, and then Senator Hancock is on the Senate Finance Committee, and then also the Property Tax Committee. And Senator Powell is on Senate Ed and also Senate Higher Ed, that's very appropriate given her background. And then Senate, Senator Birdwell is on Senate Finance and Senate State Affairs, and Senate State Affairs will likely be the committee that would take up the TRS Active Care Bill that we're going to talk about in just a minute. At the State of the State address on February 5th, the governor deems several topics to be emergency topics, and again, school finance and teacher compensation and property tax relief were among those things. And what that does is it allows the legislature to go ahead and, and begin actively deliberating around those topics before that 60-day mark. This board has been very engaged in legislative activities over the last several sessions, and I think we, we have definitely benefited from that. We have memberships in the Texas School Alliance, Texas Association of School Boards, the Equity Center, and Texas Association of Administrators. And the, the board, you all have been very actively engaged in advocating for things for, of importance to us on our legislative agenda and public education in general, and it does make a difference. And some of those things you see listed here, Dr. Cavassos was invited last week to participate in a briefing that was offered by the governor's staff on the governor's tax relief plan. And that was just a select number of superintendents that had that opportunity. He has also participated on a panel that is advising the lieutenant governor, and you all have met with lieutenant governor several times, three times in the last several months, and had some very honest discussions with him, I believe, I would say. In terms of the, the Texas Commission on Public School Finance, one of the members is Todd Williams out of Dallas, and Mr. Williams has invited superintendents from the area, some of the bigger districts, to come and meet with him and have discussions around things that the commission was considering, and we've been part of those discussions. And, and he genuinely does listen and appreciates the feedback. The Board Governance Committee has met with our senators and representatives, we did that just before the holidays, we had a group meeting with all of them. I think it was very effective to have all of them in the room together, most of them were there, had staff members there. We also have a weekly call with our legislative consultant on Friday mornings where we talk about things of significance that have occurred that week and things that are coming up in the upcoming week that we need to focus our efforts on. The board approved a legislative agenda in the fall around three primary objectives, local authority or local control, and then relevant instructional programming offerings that reflect the graduation provisions that were passed in House Bill 5 in the 83rd session, and then funding and relief from unfunded mandates. There are five broad areas in our agenda, and you see them listed here, all of our work falls within this framework. In the area of academic accountability, and what I've got now are several slides that highlight current topics that, that are either being considered by a committee or that we're working on with the legislature. And in this case, under academic accountability, it's the latter. We have been working closely with Chris Turner's office around the topic of data transparency, and Chris Turner is going to carry a bill that would require TEA to make information that's submitted to the agency from outside entity that is used in our rating calculations available to districts ahead of the release of those ratings, and what we're seeking is that we actually get them directly from the source and that they be validated, so. And again, in academic accountability in that area, there are several bills of interest that have already been filed, there are three that are identical that would make permanent the provisions of the individual graduation plans that were put into place several years ago, and that's something that we'd be very supportive of. And then Senator Powell has, has filed a bill that would add students who, who complete a coherent sequence of career tech courses to the list of ways that we can gain points in those, towards the, the CCMR indicators as part of the accountability system. And the, under our category of safety and security, note right now, in the budget bill that was filed by the House, there's $10 million for matching grants for security improvements. Even the Appropriations Committee, the folks who are considering that bill, have commented though that that's not nearly sufficient. When you think about $10 million to spread in grants, not in formula-type funding across all of the 1,020-some-odd districts in the state, $10 million is not very sufficient. We do anticipate that a, a, a more comprehensive, a comprehensive safety and security bill will be coming out of the Senate in the next several weeks, but we have not seen that yet. Under school finance, that broad category, budget bills have been filed by both the House and the Senate. The House would, their version would add $9 billion of new funding for public ed, and that, that's significant, and that certainly is very welcome. Part of the funding, though, includes $2.4 million just for enrollment growth, and then another piece that is required just to fully fund the formulas as they exist today. And then any new appropriation, there's a very specific writer in there that says that that, that new appropriation will only take effect if separate school finance legislation is passed. So the budget bill doesn't change the way money is delivered to us, it just says, here's X dollars that we're allocating for public school finance, and how that money is distributed is yet to, to be seen. And then under, also on the House side, or on the Senate side, rather, their version of the budget includes $6 billion in new funding for public ed. They've already been very vocal about how they intend those dollars to be spent, the, the biggest portion would be for teacher raises, and then also for tax relief, property tax relief. So related to those teacher raises, a separate bill was filed in the Senate to complement the dollars that are, are in the Senate budget bill, but this particular bill would provide a $5,000 salary increase to each classroom teacher. And I put in bold and italics "classroom." In the past, when the legislature has, has mandated pay raises and has funded pay raises, they've done that for a broader range of employees. It's been usually teachers, librarians, nurses, speech paths, and counselors in some cases. And in this particular bill, it's very specific just to classroom teachers. They would actually allocate the money through the, a new formula that's part of the Foundation School Program, but that's all school districts could spend that money on, it's basically a pass-through straight to, to classroom teachers. That would cost $3.7 billion of the total $6 billion new money that's in the Senate version of the budget. In terms of TRS Active Care, the district is actively pursuing legislation that would allow our district to opt out of the TRS Active Care Healthcare Plan and operate a healthcare plan on our own as a pilot for TRS. We would expect that out of that, our employees would recognize better cost and more benefits. And we think that that would help us also dramatically in recruiting and retaining employees. Representative Kraus and Senator Hancock have agreed to carry this legislation for us. We've had a bill drafted, and that bill is currently, we have taken to Representative Kraus, and he has now filed that with Legislative Council, and they are reviewing it to make sure that the appropriate, all the appropriate sections of state law have, are, are referenced in that bill, and that we're making appropriate changes there to do what, what we're seeking. And so as soon as that comes out of Ledge Council, then that bill will be filed. Representative Kraus will file the bill first, and then once we see how it's moving, Senator Hancock likewise will, will file the bill. In terms of property taxes, House Bill 2 and Senate Bill 2 have been filed, they are identical bills, they are deemed to be the Property Tax Reform and Relief Act. There are some very specific things that these bills do and that they also do not do. In terms of what they do... In terms of what they do, this is where we get this 2.5% cap that the Governor's Office has been talking about for some time. They would, in technical terms, do away with the current threshold of $1.4 for school districts that requires a TRE. And in place, the language now says that you have to hold a TRE anytime you set a tax rate that generates 2.5% more tax revenue than you had in the previous year. For school districts, the idea has been that the state would make us whole on this. So, if our property values were to go up, say, by 5%, and there's this 2.5% cap, then the state would make us whole for that other piece. So, we have yet to see how that would happen and understand how the state can afford to do that for a sustained period of time. Also, they've changed the terminology here in the calculations of our, in the tax disclosures that all public entities have to make. For these many years, we've all had to calculate what is called an effective tax rate, and that's the tax rate that raises basically the same amount of money this year as you had last year using property values that are subject to taxation in both years. And so, they've changed that now to be called, in this bill, the no-new revenue rate. And so, they've also would require some additional disclosures and actions that have to be taken as a board or a city council or county commissioner's court actually adopt a tax rate. One thing that it does is it would require all TREs to be held on the November general election date. Right now, it is possible to have, it's kind of tough, but it is possible to have an earlier TRE for school districts. But if this bill were to pass, all the TREs would be in November, and you have to call them by August 15th. So, today, if you go look at the Secretary of State's website at their election calendar for this upcoming November, the last day to call the election is August 19th. And this moves it up by a few days. I'm not sure why that is real key. I can only guess. It also moves the date by which appraisal districts have to certify your role from July 25th up to July 10th. What that bill, what these bills do not do, they actually, the language in this bill does not compress the school district's MNO tax rate. That's been a big point of discussion throughout all this, is that if your property values go up by enough that you would generate more than 2.5% more revenue at your current rate, you actually have to lower your tax rate. The language to lower the rate or compress it is not in this bill, and it's rather unclear if that's coming inside the school finance legislation that's yet to come or in a separate bill altogether. So, that remains to be seen. And what this doesn't do is it doesn't reduce property taxes. And it's kind of interesting, if you pay attention, the Governor and senior leadership have talked about reducing property taxes. Now then, that's where they started, but now what you hear is, well, this actually just reduces the growth of property taxes. And so, they're already kind of shifting that dialogue a little bit away from, you know, we're going to reduce taxes, to say, well, we're just going to slow down the growth of taxes. So, kind of interesting. We do still anticipate seeing a school finance package probably in the House first with Chairman Huberty, who is the Chair of the House Public Ed Committee, and he was on the Public School Finance Commission. And we hear that that is coming in two to three weeks. And so, certainly, it has to be before that March 8 deadline, but they still have some work to do on it, we understand. And then, in the area of school safety, they're expecting, we're expecting a bill coming out of the Senate that would specifically address school safety. And so, what we do know is that it's a long way until May 27th, when they adjourn, and we, you know, we have really no good way to predict at this point where we'll end up at that point. So, we will keep you posted. With that, we'll answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Powell. Yeah, there's going to be a lot of movement, obviously, over the next 120 or so days. It'll be very interesting to see where all this falls out. There's definitely some questions. Go ahead, Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. And I'll keep my comments short because I know other colleagues have some questions. The good thing is school finance is an emergency by the Governor. The bad thing is school finances is an emergency by the Governor. Ms. Powell, let me thank you and your staff for all the work. We get to come in and give opinions and thoughts, and legwork is done by yourself and our legislative consultants and your staff for all that. There's a lot to track and a lot to do. It starts occupying all of our time during these 140 days. And Dr. Rice, I think we're down to like 108 days or something like that left. So, it's starting to dwindle fast. As Ms. Powell said earlier, they've moved faster than they have in the past. We've got three leaders that are kind of on the same page, but we still know, once bills start getting voted on, we'll see how much of the same page everyone's on, on that same side. As Ms. Powell said, there's 2,100 bills, well over 2,100 bills have been filed so far. We're doing a lot of work. Every Friday, the Governance Committee meets to talk through these, also some other ad hoc meetings. We've already submitted our first letter opposing a bill, which is our tactic that we take, that we do believe works, and having it hand-delivered by our legislative consultant to deliver those down. We have some dates coming up. We're going down, as a board, many of us are going down, February 20th, 27th, and March 5th and 6th to start really working the process. As we know, it moves slow and then starts going fast. March is usually when it starts going pretty fast, and they start moving and bills start flying through. As you all know, one of our, we have our legislative agenda by our parties, we have a huge party in TRS Active Care, but we can't lose sight of the other pieces that we're focused on and what's happening. Sometimes a good defense is as good as an offense, and I think we will be playing some defenses. They start talking about HB 2 and SB 2. There's lots of pieces that come back. It's already discussed. Well, if this goes through exactly as I said, now you're at an equity issue that's being faced, and there are many, many problems that start floating. And, you know, as much as you don't love it, it starts then getting into, great, do these things. If it actually goes, now you're at equity and another lawsuit, which is what really fixes school finance in the past, unfortunately. I will say, Ms. Powell mentioned it, some of the big automatic pieces we've started seeing, and it kind of comes from our traction. We've had many discussions with our reps, held in a group meeting, Chris Turner, the great appointment of receiving House Higher Ed Committee Chair, and the other reps in our delegation also, all agreed on our data collection on TSI for our rating, and we think something could actually happen. Having the Higher Ed Chair in our delegation definitely helps, and it was drawn to their attention, and not only his side, but the other side that both agree on that. So, I see some strong traction on that. There's some concern of the salary increase because, as a board, we do have to be aware if something like that comes through, we're not going to. It's great. We love it. It's good. I'm glad they're talking about, understanding the value teachers bring to our district, but also understanding that numerous staff members bring that value to our district. And for them to be, I'd say, use teachers as political fodder is what they're doing because their polling shows they're not supporting teachers enough, so they need some political votes on some of those pieces of what we're having. You know, we've, and let me thank Dr. Cavassos. She's made numerous trips down to meet with our Lieutenant Governor, and let me just say, not just meet with him, but be very vocal in his meetings with him and really give the opinion of this board and the senior staff of what we believe needs to happen. You know, we've, people don't know this, we have an Education Commissioner, a Lieutenant Governor, that had a niece and nephew that were good enough to send through our schools and graduate within the last five years. So, we have lots of good pieces. We have a lot of traction. I'll keep it short tonight. It's a long, long process, but I just thank Ms. Powell and also my colleagues up here, not just the Governance Committee, everyone that sends notes and keeps tabs. And any questions we have, we're keeping, trying to keep track. It's a lot. It always is a lot. I always say, we have to weed through the junk that's on there and start figuring out how people start voting. And the voting is about to start occurring when committees actually start reviewing bills and seeing what, you know, don't get distracted by distracting bills. Let's focus on the bills that actually have traction and what's going to happen. So, I thank all my colleagues, I thank the staff for all the work on this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hogg. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Rice. I just want to echo a little bit about what Mr. Hogg just said. There's a lot, it's very promising in one respect that this is the first legislative session I can remember in a while, where, at least I have the sense that people have a cautiously optimistic outlook that positive change might come from this legislative session instead of feeling like school districts are entirely on the defensive and it's just a game of how can we mitigate the damage that they're doing down there. That being said, Mr. Hogg's exactly right that the devil is in the details of some of these things that superficially might sound great. Of course, we would love for teachers to get more money in salary, but, you know, if the state deviates from its historic practice of giving parity to classroom teachers and other people who are on our campuses, then that creates difficult issues for local school districts and, in some ways, could, once again, push off some unintended costs, some unfunded mandate essentially to us. And so, those are real consequences that we have to think about. I want to not let it, Mr. Hogg is uncharacteristically being very humble tonight, and I want to make sure that he gets the credit, that he gets the credit, he gets the credit that he deserves for his discussion of TRS Active Care. So, this is an issue since I've been on the board for about a year and a half now, and I've been privileged to sit on the Governance Committee during that time. And from the very first Governance Committee meeting that I had, Mr. Hogg has been talking about what we need to do with TRS Active Care to, because he thinks if we can get out of TRS Active Care, we have a real shot of maybe giving our employees some relief on the health insurance front. And he has been doggedly pushing that, not only with us here at the district level, but at the state level. And I was able to witness that firsthand at the Texas Association of School Boards State Convention this past September, where Mr. Hogg's been very involved with TASB for several years, but he was able to get TASB to pass a state-level resolution, where TASB has endorsed a pilot program essentially like the one that we're proposing and asking the legislature to officially adopt that. So, Mr. Hogg was instrumental in getting the pan organization for Texas school boards to sign off on the type of pilot program that our legislative agenda contains, in that we are working with Representative Kraus and Senator Hancock right now to introduce in the legislature. So, I think Mr. Hogg should get a lot of credit for that. There are a lot of people who deserve credit, but I want to make sure that he gets the credits that do him because he has educated me on that issue, and I think it's incredibly important going forward. As on SB 2, we referenced a letter that we sent yesterday or earlier this week to SB 2. And the big issue for me, if you, you know, the devil's in the details of SB 2 as well, but taking it from, you know, the bill itself to a broader concern that is also reflected in our legislative agenda, I think one of the things that we still very much have to be diligent about with this legislative session is the erosion of local control. And local control erosion is not just manifested in unfunded mandates, but all the little ways that the sweetener of extra funding can come with tying the hands of local governments who are closer to the people and, I think, most accurately represent their concerns. And that's been something that has happened, been happening for several years in Austin, and that I see, again, reflected in SB 2. It's interesting to me with SB 2 that for many of the proponents of it so far are the same people that I hear warning against the Californization of Texas. And I think if you look at California, California's public finance system in general is a system that is Byzantine and, in some respects, very chaotic because of arbitrary caps on revenue that have been put in place through various mechanisms for decades. And that, and yet here with SB 2, we have an arbitrary cap that's being proposed in that bill. And that also notably ties the hands of local governments to reflect the, to represent the needs of their constituents, and as we said in our letter, in some ways, to fund things that those voters have already, in some way, approved, which seems a little counterintuitive to me. It's also a little offensive to me, as a local government official, that we keep having these bills put in that compel us, essentially compel our speech and use, you know, what ordinance language we can use, and, you know, changing it from effective tax rate to no-new revenue rate, which in a way just is designed to make it seem like we're acting inappropriately to set a tax rate that is appropriate for the needs of our constituents. And I think it's also a little bit ironic that they're proposing that we use language "no-new revenue rate" when the deficits that are projected in our budget going forward are not primarily due to increasing expenditures that this board will approve, but to decreasing revenue from the state. And so, you know, if I was going to use the language "no-new revenue rate," really, it's, you know, our financial difficulties that we're projecting going forward are due to no-new revenue from the state. And so, I think that that's a little bit ironic, and I just wanted to call that out because, as a local government official, I look forward to working with our delegation in Austin, but at the same time, we're aware that they have the ability to limit our authority in significant ways, and we need to be leery of that. Something else I wanted to point out that wasn't in your slide, but that got a little bit of traction earlier this year, and I don't know, and maybe you can answer if there's anything that's being proposed on this, but there's been significant, in my opinion, significant sort of ceding of authority to the Commissioner of the Texas Education Agency in ways that I don't think most citizens are aware. And this manifested itself in sort of a tiff, a Twitter tiff between the Governor and some people in Houston ISD. But, you know, it was shocking to me to find out that an unelected official, unelected-appointed official, the TEA Commissioner, has the authority to remove a democratically-elected school board regardless of its size, and that is something that's a, you know, very recent development. And so, it seems like that is a big one, but in many other ways, the TEA Commissioner's powers have become quite enlarged in a way that I think is a little bit dangerous for those who care about elected accountability and the importance of locally-elected government. And so, are you aware of anything that's been done to sort of chip away at some of those powers that have grown over time?
I sat in a meeting recently with a very prominent member of the House Public Ed Committee, and that discussion, that question was asked. And the representative made the comment to a group of, there were 15 of us roughly, CFOs from very large school districts there. And he acknowledged that that was a problem and said very frankly, he did not know yet how to, how they were going to address it, that that was on their radar.
Good. That's good to hear. All right. Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Perhaps on the no-new revenue rate on HB and SB 2, you can make that friendly amendment suggestion. See how that works. I support it, but see what happens there. Whoa, hold on here. Ms. Walton, can you request again, please? There you go. Thank you, Ms. Walton.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. I just kind of want to touch back, and Mr. Chapa beautifully, beautifully said, I want to touch back to one thing, and that's the, this idea of they've realized they haven't done enough for teachers in a while, and teachers vote. And this whole idea, let me just back up a little bit. I think you and I are, can still hearken back to when we had Career Ladder. And that was a wonderful way to award people that were in the profession for going above and beyond and, you know, becoming very professional and whatever, and then the state ran out of money. And who got to pay the rest of the Career Ladder money to all of those employees that had worked all those years for it?
Well, I believe that started in the 90s, and they funded it for two years. And today, 20 years later, we still pay for it.
We are still paying for Career Ladder money to employees that are still with us in the district who qualified. This is, this whole idea of increasing teacher salaries, $3.7 billion, reminds me somewhat of that whole Career Ladder time. I guess people in Austin have just forgotten all about that. And do we know, does anybody know how long they will say that this money is going to be there for classroom teachers? Can they go past the biennium?
No.
No? Okay. So, yeah. Again, it's just looking awful lot like Career Ladder again. And we've always prided our district, this board and our district and our administrators have always prided ourselves on if one group, I mean, if classroom teachers got a raise, great. great, everybody deserved a raise. And we've always worked very hard to be sure that everybody got a raise. Do you have any idea, this is crystal ball, I'm sure, but do you have any idea what, what it would cost us to, what they're, you know, what the state's going to do for classroom teachers if we tried to do that for everyone in the district, what that would cost us?
No, we haven't calculated that.
Okay. Well, I don't think it would be cheap. Anyway, so we've got our work cut out for us, and thank you so much for all you do and keep us all on point and things, things happen when they should. We appreciate it. We appreciate, appreciate Mr. Hogg too for our faithful leader. So thank you, everybody, and Mr. Chapa, Dr. Cavassos, thanks for all you do too.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Walton. Couldn't agree more with all the comments made here by my colleagues. We will see what happens with this session moving forward. The devil is certainly in the details. I have just a couple of questions. Don't know if it's significant because I haven't really seen anything reflected in, in bills defining, trying to advocate, I guess more with a hammer on this, but on the 60 by 30 expectation or hope, what metric or metrics are they using to define what that proficiency is?
Meets on the star, the third grade star.
So it's star.
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Okay. Well, that's a, that's a flaw. Okay. So the other question, I have a couple. On, on the, the budget bill, the House budget bill, you spoke about the essentially 2.4 billion for enrollment growth, 2.2 to fund Tier Two, $9 billion, so that leaves 4.4 billion left, but that can't really be discussed until the school finance is tackled. Is that an inference to the finance formulas essentially have a 4.4 billion dollar cap? They can't go out of those bounds or it's completely independent? And they're going to come up with a formula that even though they only have 4.4 billion dollars in the budget bill allocated, it might not be enough?
Okay. So if, if there was no change in the current funding formulas and they wanted to appropriate more money, they would go in and they would increase at least the basic allotment in the current funding formula. So that's how they would deliver that additional $4 billion to all of us. And, you know, with, with, if, if they do file new legislation, then they're going to completely upend all the funding formulas, I think largely, but some of that will come attached to weights. There will be some new allotments in, in the system. They'll do away with, say, the gifted and talented, the, the high school allotment and CEI potentially, and redirect those dollars back into other elements of the funding formula. One of the things that they've talked about doing, and this is kind of a roundabout way to get to your, your answer, is on the state comp ed allotment. That money comes to us today to serve kids who are at risk. And at risk is defined by the state's criteria, the 13 different criteria that would identify students as being at risk. That money comes to us today based on the percent of our students who are on free reduced lunch. And so what they are proposing to do is, and there are different versions of this, the, what's, what is coming out of the commission is a little different than what's coming from the governor's office. The, both of them would fund you over a spectrum of poverty is what they call it. So that you would, the state would give more money per student to those districts and even those campuses specifically where you have greater concentrations of students in poverty. And they even differentiate between the extent of poverty using potentially census data. That piece is in the governor's plan. What's still in the commission, in, in the Public School Finance Commission's report is just more of a graduated allotment based still on the free reduced lunch percentage. So if your campus has 15% of your students who are free reduced, you would get one very small additional allotment for state comp ed. And then if you had a, all the way up to where if you had, say, 80 or 90% of your students are economically disadvantaged, you're going to get a greatly more money for, per student, for those students. And so they're going to change the way they deliver that money to us. I do believe that at the end of the day, we're going to see a real rework of how we get our money. But I'm not sure that really answered your question, but the $4 billion, four and a half would be consumed somewhere in their rework.
Okay. Okay. That's fair. Changing tack just a little bit, but related to what Mr. Chapa was talking about in a conversation that we always have recurring on unfunded mandates. Has there been any discussion or dialogue on that Stickland bill to, that he introduced to change the 22 to 1 to campus versus classroom?
None yet, hadn't moved yet, but no.
Okay. What?
And I will say, aside, aside from the commentary that because waivers are available to school districts and exemptions from that are available through the DOI process, I don't know that that bill would get much traction.
Yeah, yeah, sure. It's going to be, that would eat up a lot of dollars automatically. And I guess the, the golden ticket question that we've all asked repeatedly in these proposals, there's really not, at this point, a, a firm understanding of where the revenue is going to come from.
No, not at all.
So it's a lot of conjecture right now.
Right. And another thing that's interesting about all this, the school finance experts, the consulting firm really won, and even the Legislative Budget Board, they, they say very publicly, they cannot model anything right now because there is no structure, no detail around any, any of these proposals.
Right. Yeah, I was, I was thinking about how Mo Casey's going to be frantically responding to this sometime late March when all of a sudden it all comes to fruition and, and there's the deals of, okay, we'll get this to committee if you do this and you do that, and then they'll have probably just a few days to figure it all out. Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate the information. And as I said earlier, your work, the work of the Governance Committee and this entire board, as Mr. Hogg stated, moving forward, it'll take a lot of education, I believe, for us to understand what they're doing and then for us in turn to educate our community so they know what to effectively advocate for on their behalf, on our behalf. I don't see any other lights. One last call. Anybody have additional questions, comments? Very good. Thank you, Ms. Powell. All right. Next, we come to the open forum for non-agenda items. We do have a couple of cards. This second open forum, second segment of our meeting provides citizens with the opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This will, this is not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. I do have two cards from our audience. When your name is called, please step to the podium. You'll have five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there is one minute left for you to complete your presentation. When the red light comes on and the buzzer sounds, please end your presentation. First up, we have Jeffrey Harris, and the topic is salary comparison. Mr. Harris.
President Reich, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. I'm Jeffrey Harris, Regional Manager for United Educators Association. I'm bringing you tonight our annual teacher salary comparison. We'll just kind of jump right into it. So I gave you those comparisons and on year zero, which ranked seventh for this year, which is the same ranking from last year. In year five, you ranked fifth, again with no change. In year 10, you ranked 10th, that is down three spots. Year 15, you improved to ninth, which is up two spots. Year 20, the district is at 12th, down seven spots. Year 25, you're down to 12th place again, and you're down three spots on that one. And then year 30, the district is 12th again and down seven spots. So holding steady and, or improving is great. Dropping seven spots in years 20 and 30 to 30 is not. Given all the work that you have done on compensation, it's our association's belief that the pay range, without the transparency that a pay step schedule would provide, is why we saw the decline this year in many areas. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Our second card this evening, Mr. Billy Hodges. The topic is Arlington ISD non-payment. He's representing Miller Sierra Contractor, I think. Sierra, I'm sorry. Mr. Hodges.
First of all, I'd like to thank you all for hearing me tonight. My name is Billy Hodges. I'm Vice President of Construction with Miller Sierra Contractors Incorporated. We're a commercial concrete subcontractor out of Ullis. We've worked on many projects here in Arlington as far as schools and with, with private individuals as well. I want to talk about some of the projects we've been associated with the last few years in Arlington, three of those in particular. This is going to be my fourth board meeting I've attended here in Arlington. The first three, over this last six months, I've had sidebar conversations with some of the district personnel. Those conversations have been helpful and informative, but I feel like it's time to, to address things publicly and, and speak about the issues of non-payment that we have on these projects. The projects in particular are McNutt and Peach Elementary Schools and the CTC Building. All those were approved in the 2014 bond elections. Both McNutt and Peach were awarded to Miller Sierra in July of 2015 from Balfour Beatty Construction, and we started our scope of work on both of those that September. Both projects were substantially complete in time for attendance by students in the fall of 2016. We completed our final scope in September of that same year. Since our completion in September of 2016, we've, we went back, completed multiple punch lists over 2016, 2017, and then as well, we've, we went back out there for the one-year warranty walk and completed that work since then as well. All of that without being paid in full yet. We, we still have money out there. Speaking with other subcontractors, this has been done by many of them as well, and nobody's been paid their retainage on these projects. Most of these contractors, as well as a lot of our employees, you know, live in your district, not just DFW. We originally didn't bid these projects due to the workload we had then, but were repeatedly asked to do so just so the district could get its hub and minority certification goals it was trying to get for those projects. Just with our involvement alone, we helped y'all reach 17.5% of the goal that you needed for those jobs. Since these schools opened in 2016, going back and looking at the board meetings online on YouTube that you guys have on here, we've only seen that this has been discussed twice since these schools have been opened. Back in March of 2018, you all gave authority to the school superintendent to reduce the contract amounts owed to vendors, and we still haven't seen payment. And that was March of, of 2018. Right now, on just Peach and McNutt, we're currently owed $319,018.76 in retainage. CTC Building was completed by us in 2018. I think y'all had, had full enrollment in that school in fall of last year. So that school's been open for six, six months now. We're being told by the district that they still have to complete some portion of the general contractor's work on the job just because they couldn't do it. I don't, I'm not sure what all that is at this point. I've talked with the general contractor and I can't get much information there. I guess what I'm wanting to know is, on that project, we're owed $342,000, 200, or $342,211.76. Trying to see if we're going to have the same delays on that job, you know, audits that take a year to complete. Don't know whose fault it is, not saying it's Balfour's, not saying it's the district's. We just, we need some push on these things. We've got money sitting out there, $661,000 to be exact, for, you know, three years now. So unfortunately, on these kind of jobs, when they were bid back in 2015, that was the profits on these jobs, you know, 5%. So we've done these jobs for free. Money's been sitting out there for a long time. Let's see. We'd like the district to show some appreciation to the actual people who are suffering, which is the subcontractors. The general contractors, they, once they get their fees on these things, they're, they're not the people hurting. It's the subcontractors that have all this money sitting out there in retainage. So we'd like for you guys to push harder, try to get a resolution on these jobs. In closing.
Please, go ahead, finish.
The reason and sole intention of speaking tonight is to resolve the non-payment of the project to Miller Sierra Contractors and all the rest of subs. We're not saying in any way that Balfour or Arlington ISD has done anything wrong. We're trying to see if there's a resolution we can all agree on, if we need to get everybody in the same room at a roundtable and, and get amounts figured out for possible joint checks, whatever we have to do. We understand from Ms. Powell as well as Mr. Horn that getting information from the general contractor's been hard as far as figuring out what payments need to be made to subcontractors. I'm sure that every subcontractor associated with these jobs would gladly tell you what those amounts are. If we could get some kind of conversations moving forward, I think it wouldn't only help the subcontractors get paid, but also help lower bids on future bond elections that you're talking about in tonight's meeting. It's, it's no secret that when people have a hard time getting paid, things get expensive for districts, and that's what happens. It's not any fault of anybody's, it's just if they have to finance the projects, they have to work in another 2% or 3% in order to make that stuff happen. So we believe the releases of retainages, not only to us, but other subcontractors on this project, will help show good faith in the district to work with subcontractors who may not be involved in circumstances out of their control. In a time where subs and vendors are so busy, it's good to the district to have a reputation of being fair and working with people. As a contractor that works primarily in schools, we choose our work carefully. Being able to, to work things out with general contractors and districts and to get paid timely plays a big part in who we bid to and how aggressive we are on bidding the projects.
Mr. Hodges, thank you very much. I, I appreciate it. We are out of time. I, two things. One, thank you for your work and what you've done. I really appreciate you coming and addressing the board and giving us this information. And I know you alluded to it, that you've, you've been working with, have had conversations with Ms. Powell, Mr. Horn. I encourage, even, even tonight, if you would continue that, and we have absolutely heard what you've said and appreciate you taking the time to state your case here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, very good. Next on our agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Reich. And this evening, I'd like to share some information about our district, our recent happenings. First, it was a great weekend in mid-January for advancing the dream of Dr. Martin Luther King, a celebration in Arlington. Our students were featured throughout the weekend with awards, banquets, multicultural activities, step show team, et cetera. Great job to all the students and the teachers and the parents, everyone who's involved in these activities. They really pour their efforts into this and, and they should be recognized, and we appreciate them as we continue to lead the way in this celebration this weekend. Next, our parent and community engagement department continues to help the district stay connected with our community groups with regular luncheons where we get to provide an update for our community stakeholders. We've hosted the Realtors as well as our school namesakes and their families. In the past, we've had faith-based leaders, et cetera, different sessions. Upcoming will be PTA and others. Upcoming will be PTA and others. These are really wonderful times to really share with our community the updates of the district, and they really appreciate it. They have exceptional questions in those, and you see some of our wonderful namesakes there on the screen, and they're all smiling. This was, I think, one of the first times that we had played at lunch at the career tech by our students, and they did an outstanding job representing. Congratulations to the Arlington ISD Teachers and Department Employee of the Month, Gobern George of Bowie High School, Katie Wells of Bailey Junior High, Diana Barbosa of Short Elementary, and Becky Wagley from our Human Resources. It's really nice to go out and honor these individuals. They are truly the heartbeat of our district. Every time we honor them, and as you see their pictures on the website and Facebook and others, they really are and represent the culture of our district, and I'm just so proud of them. Every time, it's a special time. The students love their teachers and in the department, they do an exceptional job for our employees as well. The annual AISD Student Career Exploration Night was held in late January, and we had a record participation. Community stepped up, and they see the importance of these events and connect with our students for real-life learning and future job opportunities. Had excellent feedback as this continues to grow and show our students at an early age, from 4th grade through junior high, opportunities that are waiting for them in not only the community, but in our school district. Area 7 and Area 8 spelling bees were on Friday, and we had two very impressive groups of students in Area 7. Area 7 spelling bee, 4th grader Leo from Wood beat out Alex from Bailey for a win. And in Area 8, Nathania from Nichols and Jake from Bowles battled so long that they ran out of words. It doesn't indicate how they solved it, but apparently somebody won. Nathania won and won the Area 8. So congratulations to these wonderful students. Some of them are repeat performers, and we've seen them before. Finally, our annual district-wide National Signing Day ceremony was Wednesday, and nearly 70 student athletes signed national letters of intent to play sports in college. And I want to recognize these students again. It was a wonderful morning with the students and their families. They're leading the way. They've got scholarships to go to college, continue their education through athletics. And what a blessing in Arlington that we have wonderful students, exceptional coaches and staff that work with these students, and of course, parents as well, that dedicate many, many hours. So we're very proud of them, and we wish them the very best. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kavasos. Are there any trustees that have reports? How did I know? Mrs. Mays?
Thank you, President Rice. This is in honor of Black History Month. There was this little girl who moved from California to Texas with her sister dad and her mom. The dad thought he could come to Texas and settle his family in a house and start his own business. Well, he ended up in court because the neighborhood was not ready for a black family. He took his family safe and secure and moved to DeSoto, Texas, where his family did become the only black family in the neighborhood. Well, that meant his unexpected daughters were the only black girls in the school. So many questions and curiosity by their classmates. They were called names they didn't know the meaning of, but became way too familiar with the word. Her dad opened his own barbecue place and had the beautiful initials of his daughters as the name on the billboard, only to be renamed by that new word we were still becoming too familiar with. The girl's mom continued to repeat, "You are a child of God." And made in his image, "And he has a plan for you." No matter the color of your skin, whether you're too light, too dark, you speak differently, your hair, whatever the difference is. Her dad became employed with a corporation where he worked his way up to train some of the top salesmen in Dallas, Texas. But he was eventually told, quote, "Dallas is not ready for a black salesman." Still smiling and working hard and coming home to his loving wife and two daughters, knowing he would not be able to provide for his family the way he deserved. Her black father continued to work hard, got up, got dressed every day, and all he could do for the company, and all he got from them was excuses. Her mom said, "You are beautiful and can do whatever you set your mind to." Her dad did not have a high school diploma, but he was the wisest man she knew. Her mom continued to push and say, "You have to do more than your counterparts. They are not better than you, and you are not better than them." I am so blessed to have had my own Black History because it allowed me to see the beauty of color through God's eyes. Black History Month in February is when we pay tribute to those African-Americans who have struggled with adversities based on the color of their skin. My African-American parents. This started in the late 1920s, but history is still being made today. It runs through my veins and the veins of my three handsome, intelligent African-American sons, who I want to do better than Papa. I want them to do better than me, and I know that my husband wants them to do better than him. So please, take time this month and learn a Black History fact. Attend one of our school's Black History programs. And if the history does not run in your veins, it does impact your life every single day. And I will end this with a quote from Booker T. Washington. "Success is to be measured not so by the position that one has reached in life as by the obstacles which he has overcome while trying to succeed." Y'all, please enjoy February Black History Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. That was wonderful. And I thought you were going to be talking about Signing Day. That's why, I knew what you were... Oh, you can, you absolutely can. Well, thank you. That's powerful and inspirational. Thank you very much. Related to Signing Day, personally, congratulations to you and your son. It's a great day for many students, but yours was one of them. Congratulations. We will continue on. I guess that's Mr. Hibbs, yes? Have to count. There you go, Mr. Hibbs.
Okay. Now, thank you, President Rice. Keisha? That was wonderful. I appreciate that. And it is absolutely imperative that we all understand that we are all wonderfully and creatively made by the same God. And when our society realizes that we're all equal and we're all his children, then we'll be a better society. With that, I do want to mention that yesterday I had the real privilege to be able to go over to a clinic over in southwest Arlington. It's called Open Arms Clinic. And the Open Arms Clinic is a clinic, it's a free clinic for individuals within our community that does not have any type of, or any form of, healthcare insurance. And there are some, I think they have 25 different practitioners, nurses, social workers, counselors that are available. I do want to make sure that our community understands and knows that this clinic is there and available for them to be able to go into the doors, visit them, and they want to support our community in a very special way, between the practitioners and some faith-based organizations. They're not one that goes and says, "We expect you to pay for your visit." This is truly one that they say, "If you have the means, this is what your visit would have cost. And here's a donation box you put in." Some people put an envelope in there, some people put empty envelopes in there. But it's one that, I have to tell you, I was just taken back by the, what they do, and they really are that front line for anyone that's not insured. And then if there's anything that would cause greater medical issues where somebody would need to get a gallbladder or, you know, taken out, things like that, they have the larger Terrance County. But this organization is operating on Little Road, and I would like to encourage anybody that sees a family in need to point them directly to this Open Arms. With that, that would be my report.
Very nice, thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any other trustees that have reports? I'm seeing none. Madam Secretary, do we have any items to consider? You can...
Sir President Rice?
Thank you. It is 10 o'clock on the dot. We are not going into closed session. This meeting is adjourned.